Thank you, Dr. Armstrong and Dr. Reed. Greetings. I'm Dr. Annika Kukla, member of the CUSM Planning Committee and co-chair of the CUSM International Task Force. I'm a longtime CUSMista because I strongly believe if we are able to embed CUSM competencies into the healthcare professionals upbringing, quality and safety outcomes are going to become not a reactionary goal but a natural outcome of ever-changing healthcare environments. In my role as VA Quality Scholar, I have learned the importance of the data management for our efforts in improving both quality and safety in healthcare. The quality improvement competency emphasizes this important aspect and the implementation of the QI competency has proved to be challenging both for academia and practice. So today, we would like to put into focus the importance of data analytics. And we have the honor of having Dr. Stephen Muir with us today. Dr. Muir is Executive Principal, Data Scientist, and Member of Insights at Visient Incorporated. As a data scientist and advocate of change and performance improvement in the US healthcare system, he helps hospitals and healthcare systems harness data and provides insights on how to deliver the highest quality care at the affordable cost. He helps hospitals transform data into a story that creates -- that serves as a catalyst for operational, financial, and clinical changes in their organizations. So here's the wizard. In addition to his work at Visient, he is an associate professor at Rush University, teaching healthcare quality improvement to graduate students. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Stephen Muir.
Thank you very much. It's great to be with you today. Ten years now at Visient. If you don't know Visient, you may know us by our five separate companies that have come together in the last two and a half years, which includes MedAssets, SG2, VHA, Novation, and where I'm from, which is University Health System Consortium, or UHC. So no longer will you hear those names, you'll hear Visient. I led the comparative data offering there for the eight years before we merged with VHA. Before that, 15 years in healthcare administration, including roles as a Chief Quality Officer, role as Vice President of Operations, have a PhD in Health Services Research. My dissertation was on quality improvement implementation in hospitals. It was all fueled by my certificate that I received from Intermountain Healthcare with Brent James 25 years ago now, 20 or 25 years ago. And I will tell you that the -- with all of that, I have never been more concerned about the sustainability of the American healthcare system. And I'll tell you why. About two years ago, Medicare came out and said that they're going to go bankrupt five years earlier than expected. And some people believe that's going to be in the next 10 years. And so when we get closer to that chasm, when we get closer to that event, there's only three things that are going to happen -- that can happen. First is we can raise taxes, which is not going to happen. Second of all, is we can reduce the benefits of Medicare. That's not going to happen either. So the only thing that we know for certain that's going to happen is we're going to see substantially reduced reimbursements. And when I say substantially, I don't mean just kind of the small things. I think there's going to be a cliff in the next 10 years. What have we done as providers over the last number of years when this happens, when something like this happens? We react. And we're going to react the best way we know how, which is to puncture finally the largest mainly untapped source of expense reduction and quality improvement that we have, which is reduction of clinical variation. Now, that's a scary task for us. Don Burwick tells us that the biggest issue that we have in the American healthcare system right now is our inability to improve. And so I looked into this and tried to understand a little bit of it. I found Avedis Donobedian and his wonderful free-volume work called Quality in Healthcare. If you have insomnia, go ahead and pick up Volume 1. You don't need to read further than that. He's fabulous. He was fabulous. He's now no longer with us, was at University of Michigan, had the job that I think we all want. He got paid to think and write. But this is a great definition. It's a wonderful definition. It's very, very easy to understand. And when I look at it, I boil it down to two things. You only need two things for an improvement to occur: data, and that data must motivate a change. Now, we start to see why it's been so darn difficult in healthcare to be able to create improvement. First of all, data. Data in and of itself doesn't change or motivate improvement. For that, it has to go through this equation to insights. And when you break down that equation to insights, the top part is an information technology part that I think we've done a wonderful job in the last 10 years of in healthcare. In fact, billions of dollars go in every year to new healthcare data analytic tools. There are so many of them that many of our hospitals have four, five, six of the same thing. They don't know it. One's blue and one's yellow, but they have four, five, six of the same thing. That's an IT effort, so I think we've done a lot of great work in that. What we haven't done is we haven't given the information to the right people who can add context or understanding to that information and turn that into insights, because it's insights that's going to motivate that change. Those people were described in the Harvard Business Review article in October 2012 as data scientists, also described as the sexiest job of the 21st century. It's when I first started carrying around my man pouch, first started wearing my bow ties. And I will tell you that there is a difference between data scientist and data geek, which I've been for many years. And that is, both really on a Friday night, we're both going to be knee-deep in data. I love getting into the data on Friday night, developing insights. I know that seems a little geeky and dorky, but I do it as a data scientist with a nice glass of wine. The data geeks do it with beer still. So that's the only difference that I know. But I'm going to talk a little bit about this because I think this is the key missing ingredient in these data scientists. I don't think we have what we need to, to be able to get that information to insights. What we really need is someone -- we need a model. We need someone to be able to think about who's done this in the past. What a great quote from this individual, we can't even count deaths properly, is they do not take into account those patients that are discharged in a hopeless condition. It could have been said by maybe any one of us 10, 15 years ago, maybe even yesterday. It was said in 1895 by Florence Nydengale, who is, in my view, the queen of data science. What she did in the Crimean War was absolutely incredible, absolutely incredible. And it wasn't just looking at the data, it was the way that she got the change to occur. It was the way that she used her status and her family's status to go back and to be able to work with the generals, to be able to get those sheets changed that were killing the soldiers. Great other quotes from Florence. I attribute my success to this. I never gave or took any excuse. How very little can be done under the spirit of fear. What fabulous words for data science. Because remember, the data scientist is not just a person that's knee-deep in the data, they're the ones that are interpreting it, putting it together, and developing a story out of it, and then helping to motivate change. So we've tried to do it Visient over on the left-hand side. We're not only providing our organizations with what we think is world-class data, data that allows for this type of data science work to be done. We've built what we call an improvement community, because just like the talk before, which is a fabulous complement to this, just like that talk, what we've found is that improvement is a team sport. It's not only a team sport within your organization, but with many organizations. And you need to be able to collectively look at this. With the University Health System Consortium for a number of years, we had competing hospitals. We have competing hospitals from all across the US on the same database. Northwestern and Rush and University of Chicago and Loyola and UIC, all on the database. But they're all talking to each other about improvement. They're all going into the database that allows them to be transparent, to be able to get to that. So that's been really nice to be able to see this happening. Now, every hospital, though, has its own items that they need to be careful about when they're looking at improvement. First of all, I've never seen a massive improvement without some sort of leadership focus. You'll also have to develop your own data science, your own analytics within, and then you'll have to have engaged clinicians. And of course, that has been challenging for everybody for a long period of time. And my friend here in Chicago, Shannon Sims, who worked at Rush and at Freherd, has simply taken the Kubler-Ross stages of grief and transformed those to the stages of quality measurement. Everyone in this -- we've never heard those first four things over and over on the right-hand side, over and over and over and over again. Our goal as data scientists is to be able to get our organization to acceptance, to be able to get to the clinicians, get to the point where they can say, okay, maybe we can do better. Quick example of that, a director of quality at Northwestern came up and said, we are trying to get our cardiologists involved in length-of-stay improvement. It wasn't working. They were saying, it's an operational issue, you have some things that we need you to fix in order for us to be able to get to this point. And they just basically shunned it away until that person was able to develop a story that showed specific clinical conditions where Northwestern patients were staying in the hospital two or three days, more than Duke patients, more than Cleveland Clinic patients, more than other patients. And then that's when the clinicians started saying, oh, let's look into this a little bit more. I want to be able to understand this a little bit. So that role of the data science really is to take that data, turn it into insights. And so they're not only the people that are going to present the insights, they are, yes, the people that are going to develop the reports, they're going to develop the story that goes along with it. So that means that they have to be proactive in mind the data. And I'm going to distinguish this in a little bit about where we are, where I think we are right now, and really try to motivate that change. Data science has actually become a statement like engineer. There are many flavors of this. There are a lot of organizations who I go to, and I've been to about 80 hospitals to present over the last year, who have said, oh, we have our own data scientists. And when I look, they're data scientists, but they might be data scientists in terms of information technology. So there is a whole section of individuals who are developing applications, who are writing code. I would consider them to be data scientists, but not the data scientists that I think I'm looking for, that I think the healthcare world needs right now in order to motivate change. Love this quote by Henry Felsen about the cold. The data scientist is the one who's putting a lot of interpretation to it. So he says, "Proper treatment of a cold will cure it in seven days, but left to itself a cold will hang out for a week." So this is something where, you know, it can be a clinician. Some people always ask me, can it be a clinician? Absolutely. But what it has to be is someone who understands healthcare. And sometimes, it shouldn't be a clinician, because a lot of the clinicians will bring their knowledge of what they see. And so when you take a look at something that might be a difference, they'll say, they can explain it away. Rather than explain it away, if you're a non-clinician, sometimes you can look in further to the data and find something where you can really improve. I am less interested in p-values than I am in practical significance. And I think that if you're into getting enough data and developing that and developing manuscripts, absolutely, that's what you need is p-value. But when you're working on a day-to-day basis and trying to get change to occur, you can't wait around for all the data. You have to understand variation. You have to understand statistical process control. That's the statistics that we use. We talked about a little bit that it's concerned with relationships and presentation skills much more than IT code, and I'll get into this here in just a second. That article, which is great, it's really interesting, it rarely mentions healthcare. In fact, the only time it mentions healthcare is where it says that we have a dearth of these data scientists in healthcare. But when it was written in 2012, it was very true statement for even healthcare, that there's really no university programs at that time that were spitting out data scientists. It was very difficult to find them. People were asking, well, who are these people? Are they nurses? Are they physicians? Are they administrators? They're essentially all the above, but they have to be able to have some knowledge of healthcare and some training in it. Now, since that article, though, there are programs that have popped up. I know St. Louis University has a Masters in Data Science. I know Cal Berkeley has developed a Masters in Data Science and PhDs as well, and a couple of other programs that are looking at that. I've seen their outline, their curriculum, and it's good, it really is. But again, I'm not certain it's exactly what we need. It's really focused on statistics, not as much focused on change, which I think data scientists really need to be change leaders as well. Where are we today in healthcare? Well, we are putting our improvement efforts and our data efforts in particular into the hands of young, I'll say very young, very talented analysts. These are mainly Masters of Health Administration students who are coming out of programs and going in as analysts in organizations. They are mainly put in the basement where they're asked to be, write reports, be reactive to writing reports on folks, which they're very good at producing. They can start to get to the point where they can start to say, okay, well, I know this is going to happen, so I'm going to write this report. But most of the time, there's really very little connection to senior leadership among those groups. It's decentralized. My theory is this. My theory is that senior leadership, when we had the quality department that was built out of JCO, and then it was built out of making sure you're accredited, and they wanted to be able to turn their attention towards improvement. I really encourage our organizations to take accreditation, take core measures, take regulatory stuff, and move it out and have a separate group for performance improvement. But I also encourage them to keep it in the quality department. But what a lot of our senior leaders have done is they haven't seen the improvement that they wanted from the quality department, so they've turned and built different departments. So now I go into organizations and I see a quality department, I see a performance improvement department, I see a decision support department, I see analysts under the COO, I see analysts in the IT department, I see analysts all across the place. And my message is this: Look at it more simply. It's data plus change. Bring them all together into one area, and so hopefully, some of that will get to that point. We have too many options for the shiny options, the shiny objects. I was just talking to someone today, and if you're looking at population health, okay, population health data, it might not be where we need it to be at this point in time. But if you want to improve in your organization, if you want to reduce lab tests, if you want to reduce radiology test drugs, if you want to reduce length-of-stay, readmissions, complications, mortality, you have the data right now. You don't have to go searching for that next shiny object. And you don't have to go searching for these innovative companies that I spent a year studying and realized that many of them are not innovative, they're duplicative. This is a company that, here's their tagline up there, you can read it on your own, but they've raised millions, millions of dollars through venture capital funds. They were known as the darling of Wall Street a couple of years ago, listed as the top prospect for an IPO by Modern Healthcare. Within a year, hired 300 employees scouring the United States to be able to sell their wares. Few paying customers still today. Five years later, few paying customers. And so when these venture capital firms start to wonder where this sustained revenue's going to come for these new innovative companies, it's going to be, it's going to be a bloodbath for a lot of the entrepreneurs and venture capital folks. So that's a little bit about the data. Let me move a bit to change, and then I'll end. Change, as we know, is very difficult. Change in healthcare is what I call blood, sweat, and tears. It's not an innate drive of ours to be able to change, and I'll get into that. And it's against current societal norms, particularly in healthcare, particularly in healthcare. So when we break that down, if you look at a book called Driven, again, another one I wouldn't suggest you read, and it's incredibly dense, by two Harvard professors, Lawrence and Noria, who've done a fabulous job of describing what they think is the difference between myself and everyone else in here. We each have different percentages of these four drives. That's it. That's the difference between all of us. And so I took a look at this and thought, okay, how do we think of ourselves as administrators, as nurses, as physicians, before or while we're in school, while we're in nursing school or medical school, or while we're getting master's degrees? Well, I'm certain the drive to learn is high in many of us, and I'm certain the drive to bond is pretty high, and the drive to acquire is probably also pretty high. So defend is probably the lowest of those, again, for most of us. When we all graduate and the first day we step into practice, no matter if it's as a nurse, as a physician, or as administrator, I'm going to suggest to you that one drive skyrockets over every other one, and that's the drive to defend. And then if one drive skyrockets, then the others have to decline. So drive to acquire probably stays pretty high where we are, particularly if you have two children, or if you have kids going to college and those types of things. You want to be able to make sure that you can acquire enough to be able to do that. So unfortunately, learn and bond may decrease, most likely will decrease. And that's unfortunate for a lot of reasons, because when you're thinking about change in the healthcare system, what are the two drives that lend itself most to change? The drive to learn and the drive to bond. And so that's one of the reasons why it's been so darn difficult in healthcare to be able to do this. Now, I thought, were Noria and Lawrence, did they miss a drive? Is there an actual drive to improve that they've missed? And then I said, that's probably not the case, because if that was the case, if an issue came up, we'd all look at ourselves and say, what do I need to do to change? And we would all change just a bit, and we would see massive improvement. Now, that would be a fun place to work, right? What would happen is that HR directors would be tasked with only finding the survey to go out and find those people whose drive to improve was higher than everybody else's. And by the way, I wouldn't be needed, and many of you in quality and safety wouldn't be needed either, because we wouldn't have to worry about improvements or change, because they would just happen naturally. Well, as we know, that doesn't happen. What happens typically is, there's an issue, and we all, and I'm guilty of this too, and you can ask my wife, she'll tell you, I'm very guilty of this many times, I'll look to the other person and say, well, they need to change in order for this improvement to occur. And then with little accountability, what happens is we don't get the improvement that we need in the healthcare system. Look at it a little bit of a different way. You know, there was a, I don't know who came up with this, I didn't, and I apologize for stealing it, if I can go back and try to look for it. But if you take a look at people in general, they will say that people fall into three buckets. They are positive no matter the environment. They could be positive or negative, depending upon it, or they're negative no matter the environment. Now, we all know the tails, right? I can tell you that the CEO I worked for at the CAB Medical Center as the Chief Quality Officer, Eric Norwood, is positive no matter the environment. He is a fabulous individual, and I love spending time with him. The ship could be sinking, but he's wanting to know how can he help support the work that I'm doing. We all know the other tale, and I'm not going to describe anybody I know from the other tale, but we all know the other tale. And so let's just think about your nursing units, the nursing units in our hospitals. I think that the biggest issue that we have right now in healthcare is that, you know, negative no matter the environment is 15 to 35%. I would say in healthcare, maybe that's more towards 35%. What happens to those 55%? That's the biggest issue that we have in healthcare right now, is the most vocal people typically are the ones that are the most negative. And they're the ones that are swaying the 55% over. If you're negative, there's no way change is going to occur in that unit. And so we would always go and pick the units that we thought were the most positive units in the organization to be able to pilot those types of things with. And our HR folks got together and we used this slide at orientation for new employees. We said, we are here to reward those 10%, cultivate the 55%, motivate the 35%, and then yes, if we can't motivate them, then eliminate them. Because we realize that they're a huge barrier, not only for employee satisfaction, and by the way, employee satisfaction leads to patient satisfaction, particularly in the nurses, they're also a barrier to change. So some advice in terms of change, three bits of advice or four bits of advice. First of all, my title of the slide, the crap detector. My mom would kill me if I kept saying that over and over again. "Crap detector is a convoluted reasoning and anti-intellectual pomposities." It was developed by Hemingway in the early 1900s for a play. So convoluted reasoning and anti-intellectual pomposities. It essentially describes someone as a crap detector, who's someone who can sense when someone else is full of crap. So for example, the old, well, if it's not statistically significant different, then I'm not going to worry about it. That is not something that's based in reality. We all know statistical significance, or not we all do, but statistical significance has as much to do with sample size as it does with effect. So we're never going to get the sample size to be able to get that, but that was a way that many clinicians were able to say, I'm not interested in getting and thinking about change. It's as much about the relationship as it is knowledge. When I teach Masters in Health Administration programs, I try to nail this into them much more. You know, knowledge is great to be able to have. I quite honestly don't remember much from my two Masters that I got at University of Florida, other than the football team was really good for those three years. And I did travel around to be able to see them work that. But what I do remember is how I needed to be able to interact with people. I learned that early, and how I can be able to do that so that it's a positive relationship that moves towards change. Ernest Codman, fabulous individual in the 1900s, early 1900s, a physician who gave us the end results idea. What a fabulous idea. He followed his patients after surgery. And he would talk to them before surgery, and he'd say, what do you want to be able to do with this? Well, I want to walk to the park after the surgery. I want to be able to walk to the park with my granddaughter. Great, I think you'll be able to do that in six months after the surgery. Six months, he would call that patient and ask, are you walking your granddaughter to the park? If she says yes, he'd say, great, thanks. If they said no, they would go back and find out what happened so that he could change what he was doing, go back to that definition of Avedis Donobedian. Why didn't that take hold? Why didn't that take hold? I mean, that's what a fabulous idea. We're not even doing that today. It didn't take hold because Ernest Codman was a jerk. He got kicked out of the Harvard Medical Society, he got kicked out of Brigham and Women's where he was working, or Mass General, one of the two. I'm sure someone out there knows that. And he started his own hospital called the End Results Hospital that went into disrepair because no one would go and see him, and died penniless, only to be resurrected by Joint Commission many years later, because we now have award for the Codman Award. But that's why it failed, not because it wasn't a great idea, but because he was trying to shove it down everybody's throat and telling everybody they were doing the wrong thing. The fallacy of CQI, Six Sigma and Lean, those are methodologies, they're not going to get you the answer, they're not going to get you the change, so just keep that in mind. It's good to be able to have that. Thank you. And then Tipping Point by Malcolm Gladwell, the Bible on Change. Bible on Change. Just read it. There's three points. He makes the law of the few. You need those three things to be able to get change to occur. You need a data maven, you need a connector and a salesperson, just like Paul Revere's ride. I'm not going to go through these, but read the book, Tipping Point, it's fabulous. Or read it again, if you don't remember these. The stickiness factor, or the sexiness factor, and then the power of context are fabulous. So I'm going to end by telling you what this looks like when it all comes together, and it does well. And this is a story of West Virginia University Hospital, Ruby Hospital. We give a ranking out to our member hospitals each year. We rank them from 1 to 102 in terms of academic medical centers, and then the non-academics. We don't share this outside the members because we want to use it for internal motivation. In 2013, they were ranked 71st, and they got to sixth place last year. It's remarkable, thinking that almost every hospital is improving, they were improving much more rapidly than others. Look at how they look in risk-adjusted mortality. They're the orange line, going from 1.42, anything above one is worse than expected, anything below one, better than expected. And this is against the other quality and accountability winners, that's the other hospitals that are ranked high. And then the US News and World Report honor roll hospitals, of which we have all but one. So you can see, they were well above a few years back, and they saw a nice improvement. Only hospital I've seen, particularly academic medical center, that has bent the cost curve over the last couple of years, and then fabulous reduction in readmissions also. All of this happening at the same time. What happened? Not much, really. The CEO and the CQO said, we are going to be better in this study. We're going to incentivize all of our employees. All employees are bonused on how they do in these metrics. They have service lines that they developed, physician, nurse, those two are bonus based on how they do for their service line in these metrics. They've given each one of those service lines analytic or data science support to be able to do this. They're giving them dashboards each month, and then they're drilling down substantially to find out where they can improve in that. And those six analysts are writing over, or five of them are writing over 1,000 reports, one's writing over close to that point. I call 1,000 the sexy line. Those people who are writing over 1,000 reports on this tool are really in this on a day-to-day basis. What does this mean? If you get a risk-adjusted mortality red dot in cardiology, they're going into the database to find out why. Is it because your length of stay is too high? Is it because you have complications? Is it because of this or that? The database allows you to drill in very, very specifically. Now, they had specific efforts that they found from this, and I've listed those there. But the real story is, is that they disstructured themselves to get improvement done in that organization. Incentivized folks, got people to do things just like you heard from Colorado in terms of teams, and it worked. It worked. So that's it. And again, I thank you for being here and for listening to me talk about my sexy job. And do I have time for one or two question or comments? Clear as mud, right? Excellent. Well, thank you very much. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Muir, for inspiring us to understand the importance of data and to start thinking, "How can we incorporate this into our curriculums?" But most importantly, thank you for explaining to us what's the difference between data scientists and data geeks. I thought I was a data geek, but now I know I'm not. And especially the crap detector, we are going to use it. We will now move to concurrent session three, and after the session, enjoy what the city of Chicago has to offer, and see you back at 7:00 in the morning for a heart-hardened breakfast and concurrent sessions beginning at 8:00. Have a nice evening.